...two orders, it's Tuesday, June 10th. 25 minutes, the Springfield Rumble, regular morning. Ms. Adams?
Ms. Mason?
Here.
Ms. Frola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Here.
Ms. Furlong?
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the project? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We are now going to have recognition of the 24-25 retirees.
So this is always a fun time and a sad time. What I'm going to do is I'm going to read everybody who's retiring, so everybody out there knows who it is. And if you're here, please come up front because we have something special that Vanna White is going to hand out to you.
[laughing]
And I do my hand gestures when we're doing this. Okay. First, Eldon Anderson. Mr. Anderson's not here. He was with the district for 29 years. In 95-96, he was hired as a second grade teacher at Lake Moore Elementary. In '08-'09, he moved to Roosevelt's. In 14-15, he moved to Spring Hill. And then in '22-'23, he moved to Schrop, teaching fourth grade until his retirement in '10-25. So Tom, congratulations. Next, Betty Bersik. Betty was with the district for 14 years. In '11-'12, she was hired as a bus monitor, where she worked until retirement in February of 2025. Congratulations to Betty. Francine Bees, I think she's on a ship somewhere or...
Mexico.
She's where, Mexico?
Mexico.
Okay, nope. Okay, so she's not here. Maybe she's watching, though. Hey, Francine? Okay. As she's sitting on the beach. She was with the district for 30 years. In '94- '95, she was hired as a teacher at Lake Moore Elementary. In '01-'02, she moved to Young and Roosevelt Elementarys. '04-'05, she moved to Lake Moore Elementary. '08-'09, she moved back to Roosevelt Elementary. '12-'13, she moved to Young Elementary. '21-'22, she moved to Schrop Intermediate. And then '23-'24, she moved to Spring Hill, where she retired in May of 2025. So congratulations, Francine. Lori Begonovich. So Lori was with the district for 33 years. There's a pattern here. For all you new hires, see what's happening here. In '92-'93, she was hired as a teacher at Roosevelt Elementary. In '02-'03, she moved to Lake Moore Elementary. In '04-'05, she moved to Boyer Kindergarten Center. In '07-'08, she moved to Roosevelt Elementary. And then '10-'11, she moved to Schrop Intermediate, where she retired this year in May of 2025. Congratulations, Lori. Rayland Craig. Come on up! Woo-hoo! So Rayland wins the prize. She was here for 39 years. She was hired as a teacher at Roosevelt Elementary in '86-'87. In '95-'96, she moved to Boyer Kindergarten Center. In '07-'08, moved to Lake Moore Elementary. In '08-'09, moved to Roosevelt Elementary. And 14-15, moved to Spring Hill Elementary, where you worked until this year. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, Kelly Harmon Weiss. Kelly was with the district for 32 years. She was hired as an art teacher at Lake Moore Elementary in '93-'94. In '95-'96, she split between Lake Moore and Sawyerwood. In '07-'08, she split between Lake Moore and Schrop. In '08- '09, she moved to Schrop. '11-'12, she moved to Spring Hill Junior High School. '12-'13, she split between Young and Roosevelt's. 14-15, she split between Schrop and the high school. Then in '22-'23, she moved to the high school full-time, where she worked until retirement until 2025. So congratulations, Kelly. Hold on, I want to talk to you. Am I out of order? You're out of order. She's out. Okay. Teresa Hethorn? I saw you. All right. Teresa's been with the district for 31 years. In '94-'95, were hired as a playground monitor for Young Elementary. '96-'97, worked as a playground monitor and library clerk at Young. Then in 2000, he became a teaching assistant at Young. '05-'06, moved to Spring Hill Junior High. '07-'08, moved to Schrop Intermediate. '10-'11, moved to Spring Hill Junior High, back and forth. 14-15, moved to the high school. Then in '18-'19, became the building secretary at the high school. And then in '19-'20, moved to Young Elementary. And then '21-'22, moved to Spring Hill Elementary, where you worked until your retirement of this year. Congratulations. Come on down. Now, it says that Jenny's been with the district for 31 years. That's your age, right? Because you've been here since kindergarten?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's a little bit longer than 31 years, but only by about five years. So we're good. In '94-'95, was hired as a teacher at Boyer Kindergarten Center. I didn't know you taught kindergarten.
I did. That's hard to start.
'96-'97, moved to Young Elementary. '03-'04, moved to Schrop as a 50% admin. '04-'05, became a full-time administrator. '06-'07, split between Schrop and Boyer. '07-'08, split between Schrop and Spring Hill Junior High. '08-'09, became head building principal at Spring Hill Junior High. '10-'11, moved to Young Elementary. '21-'22, moved to Spring Hill Elementary, where you worked until your retirement of this year. Congratulations. Dave, you didn't go to kindergarten, did you?
No.
Okay, just checking. Okay. Dave was with the district for 31 years. In '94-'95, was hired as a teacher at Lake Moore Elementary. In '08-'09, moved to Schrop Intermediate. '13- '14, became an administrator at Schrop Intermediate. In '15-'16, moved to Spring Hill Elementary as head building principal. In '21-'22, you moved to Schrop Intermediate, where you remained until your retirement of this year. Congratulations. Ed Lancer. Ed has been with the district for 31 years. He was hired as a teacher at Spring Hill Junior High in '94-'95. In 14-15, he moved to the junior high high school. And in '19-'20, he moved to Schrop Intermediate until his retirement of this year. Congratulations to Ed. Wendy Kleeman. So Wendy was with the district for 33 years. In '92-'93, hired as a teacher at Lake Moore Young Elementarys. In '93-'94, moved full-time to Young Elementary. In '21- '22, moved to Spring Hill Elementary, where she worked until her retirement of May of 2025. Erica Meter. Erica was with the district for 31 years. She was hired as a music teacher at Roosevelt Elementary. In '94-'95, '95-'96, she moved to Lake Moore Elementary. In '07- '08, she moved to Schrop Intermediate. '10-'11, she split between Schrop and Young. In 14-15, she split between Schrop, wow, Schrop and Young and Spring Hill. In 2021, she moved to Schrop Intermediate. And in '22-'23, she moved to the high school, where she retired in May of 2025. Thank you, Erica. Next up is Larry Murphy. Is he a teacher of the year? Larry has been with the district for 33 years. In '92-'93, he was hired as a teacher at Roosevelt Elementary. In '94-'95, he moved to Spring Hill Junior High. In '02-'03, he moved to the high school, where he worked until his retirement of this year. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Vance Reif. Vance was with the district for 28 years. He was hired as a custodian at the high school in '96-'97. In '09-'10, he moved one half to Spring Hill and one half at Roosevelt's. In 14-15, he moved to a high school full-time. In '16-'17, he became head building custodian at the high school. And in '19-'20, he moved to Spring Hill, where he worked until his retirement of August of 2025. Congratulations, Vance. Mary Sayers. Mary, you're almost right up there with Rayland, too. So you had been with the district for 37 years. In '88-'94, you were hired as a monitor at Lake Moore Elementary. And in '94-'95, you became a secretary at the admin building. In '95-'96, you moved to Sawyerwood as head building secretary. And then in '01-'02, you moved to the high school, where you worked until your retirement, 2025. Congratulations. Danielle's the baby of the group here, because she's with the district for nine-plus some years, okay? You were hired as the assistant principal at the high school junior high in '15-'16. And in '23-'24, you became the junior high associate principal, where you remained until your retirement of February of 2025. Congratulations. And then finally, Donna Walker. Donna has been with the district for 40 years. She was hired as a cook in '84-'85. And then in '98-'99, she became cafeteria manager at Schrop, where she remained in this position until retirement in September of 2024. Congratulations, Donna. So Cynthia Worsinski. Okay, I don't have the information for Cynthia. Cynthia's been with the district for...
33 years?
33 years. And she ended up at...
At Spring Hill.
At Spring Hill for her finals. And we will get more information on Cynthia. We apologize for that. I'll make sure she gets her bill. Congratulations, Cynthia. Again, if we can give a round of applause to all our retirees, thank you so much for the service and everything that you've done here.
At this time, excuse me, we have board members in formal. Any comments or observations you want to make? And usually I pass it on, but I'm not going to do it this time. I'm very privileged to have been colleagues with many of the people that are on this retirement list. So I knew them as colleagues, and I thank them for the years of service and for the support that they showed. And to the teachers, I'm talking now about Mary and Teresa, and to their, the other teachers in the building. So congratulations. I hope you all have a good retirement. And I have a feeling we'll see you as many years as you put in here. I think we'll see you around again in some way, so...
Could always sub.
Sorry.
Can always sub. Don't everybody jump at one time.
No, you can't sign them up tonight.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah.
Darn it.
Well, things are heating up in Columbus. The House Bill 96 went to the Senate, and it's now going to get kicked back to the House. They're going to continue with five and six years of the Fair Funding Plan, Cup Patterson. It doesn't include any increase in base costs. This is more for Chris and people in finance. It guarantees districts at fiscal 2021 levels, provides growth for enrollment growth. The other interesting things on this, we were really worried about, you talked about, if you paid attention to this, there was a 30% cap on district carryover. Well, the Senate has raised that to 50%. They didn't do away with it. That one, it will be appropriated. They'll come together and they'll figure this out. 20 more days, if this is June 10th. Budget needs to be approved by July 1st, according to the Constitution. So that's, if that wasn't bad enough, now you have a whole lot of sweeping property tax bills. The new one on the list is House Bill 335, Sweeping Tax Property Reform Bill. I sent a letter out to all the board members of administration. That removes ability to levy inside millage, which a lot of our levies have been out there for a long time, so it's at the 20-mill floor. And that's where this conversation across the state has grown. Other proposals in 335 are House Bill 129, 186, 309. You really need to get in contact, your state senator, your state representative, and oppose this. And on top of that, there is a new initiative out there statewide. The new initiative will be to eliminate property taxes altogether. That's going to go, if it gets enough signatures, it will go on the ballot in November. So it will alleviate your property tax altogether. And then organizations like us, townships, villages, police, fire, will all have to get their money the way I'm understanding this from the language that I'm hearing, and the talk that I'm hearing, either from sales tax or income tax, that there would be no property tax. I can see that passing in the state of Ohio. I really can. So hang on, folks. It's going to get real interesting for the next six months.
It is.
I'm done. And congratulations to y'all that retired. I got 12 more working days than I can put my hat on that.
I do not have 12 more working days, but congratulations. Just throwing it out there because Larry Murphy has, what, 33 years of Teacher of the Year running. So I'm excited that other people will be able to finally win this. It's kind of getting out of hand. If you get bored, we can all follow Larry Murphy because he volunteered at Bingo this past Monday, and he had a great time. So if you'd like to come help at Bingo, we will always take volunteers. But really, congratulations to everyone with your retirement.
Yeah, same here. I did some quick math with all those retirees. It came up to 546 years.
Wow.
That's a lot of years. Yeah. That's a long time to replace that. So thank you guys for all your dedication. Congrats to the seniors this year. And all the incoming students, read at least one book before you come back to school.
Yes, likewise. Congratulations to everybody retired. I hope the next phase of life is very exciting for you.
A long retirement. My father retired in 50. Okay. He passed it on to me. He was one of those guys that he asked me, how much am I paying for the system? That's the year. I said about $28,000. How much have I gotten back? I said, well over $2 million. And he went, wow. I said, you were one of those lucky agents. But, you know, fighting two wars and living in depression. But we won't see that, obviously. But that's a neat story. So I hope you all had 95-year-old. And be home to your retirement.
Thank you. Item number six, it is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the regular meeting, which was held on May 20, 2025, and it was provided in Exhibit 1.
Second.
Mr. Adams has been moved in second. Any questions? Go ahead.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Frola?
Yes. Motion passed. Item number seven is time set aside for citizens' comments on agenda items. So any citizens' comments on agenda items are welcome at this time. Is there anyone that...
No retirement patients.
I thought for a minute Mr. Murphy was coming.
You sure you don't have anything to say?
One final question.
All right. Number eight is payment of bills. These are the monthly bills. It is recommended that the board approve payment of bills for the month of May, pending audit of those. And that was provided in Exhibit 2.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Adams has been moved in second.
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Item nine is the acceptance of the financial reports. It is recommended that the board accept the financial reports from the treasurer for the month of May, 2025. And these have been provided in Exhibits 3, 4, and 5.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Frola?
Yes. A motion passed. It is recommended that the board accept or approve the following personnel items. 10.1 is retirement resignation of exempted employee Christine Poling, effective November 1, 2025. 10.2 resignation, accept the resignation of Michael Winland as a varsity football assistant coach, effective June 8, 2025. 10.3, employ Brian Mosenko as the Spring Hill Elementary principal on a two-year administrative contract, pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening, effective the '25-'26 school year. 10.4, employ the following as 1% teachers, per the negotiated agreement, and in all cases, pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening. And this would be effective for years, the school year '25- '26. One is Trent Bontrager, physical education. Danielle Capotesto, art. And Sarah Charlotte, art. Jessica Garbinsky, elementary teacher. Anna Polak, elementary teacher. And Rachel Stacklup, music. 10.5, tenure. Approve the tenure for Monica Rusick, who is initially licensed on or before January 1, 2011, holds a professional license, has appropriate credit hours, and has three years, at least three years of experience in the system, and is therefore recommended for continuing a contract, effective with the '25-'26 school year, pending proper documentation to meet the requirements. 10.6, reassign the following classified employees, per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure, effective for the '25-'26 school year. Karen Devert, 6.5, educational assistant at Spring Hill. Holly Murphy, two educational assistants at Schrop. And Regina Southall as a, excuse me, teaching assistant at the Springfield Preschool Center. 10.7, employ the following as classified substitutes, per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening, effective the first day assigned. And those are William Evans, Gregory Ben Lally, and Jim Youngson. 10.8, employ the following classified personnel to work extended school year. Total Educational Solutions, ESY, and summer camps, summer 2025, per the negotiated agreement, pending sufficient student enrollment and proper licensure. And those include Christie Joyner, Dawn Black, Terry Connor, Regina Goldinger, Jessica Wright, and Betty Beatty. 10.9, the following teachers, approve the following teachers to serve on the district leadership team, per the negotiated agreement. And those include Dave Bosco, Christine Delaro, and Dana Floyd, Michelle Hannah, Jen Hoskin, and Christie Hubert. 10.10, approve the following teachers for building leadership team, per the negotiated agreement. Tammy Applegarth, Dave Bosco, Rebecca Boyd, Leona Cable-Baldinger, Libby Kreitz, Meredith Gray, Michelle Hannah, Jen Smith, Melinda Weakland, Michelle Zargis, and Brett Zimmerman. That would be for the high school. For the Schrop Intermediate, Amanda, I'm sorry, Chumiti?
Chumita.
Mm-hmm.
Chumita.
Chumita, I apologize. Christine Delaro, Cynthia Ferguson, Dana Floyd, and Cynthia Johnson. And for Spring Hill Elementary, Kendra Cox, Jen Hoskins, Anne Morrison, Paula Murphy, and Matt Schlarb. 10.11, approve the following athletic supplemental contracts for the '25-'26 school year, per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening. And these include Kevin Nash, who will be for the head basketball coach. Derek Garber, junior varsity boys' basketball coach. Brian Kuser, varsity football assistant coach. Jeff Moore, eighth grade football coach. And Patrick Trnaski, eighth grade football assistant coach. Non-sport supplemental contracts. The following non-sport supplemental contracts for the '25-'26 school year, per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure. And those are as listed on your agenda. No offense to anyone, but the, and 10.13, extended time. The following extended time for the '25-'26 school year. Ashley Fraley as head band director, extended days. Melinda Weakland and Charlene Moss, both as counselors, and they always have, they have extended days. And 10.14, unpaid leave of absence. Approve an unpaid leave of absence for classified employee Rachel Frame, from May 1, 2025, until approximately the start of the '25-'26 school year. I'm done. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Frola?
Yes, and thank you for everyone who's going to help our kids.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Furlong?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, so just a couple. First, I'd like to introduce, Mary's going to start with the new teachers.
All right. So we, obviously, we have a lot of new teachers coming in, because you saw all the fels that we gave away today. We do have several in the audience, so I'm going to start over my far side. And we have Rachel Stacklup. She is music for Spring Hill Elementary. Back in the back in the center, we have Trent Bontrager. He is PE for Schrop. We have Sarah Sharret right here. She is art for Schrop. And then we have Jessica Garbinsky in the back. She is fourth grade for Schrop.
And Jessica, I was her principal back at Talmadge, so...
Wait, I hope I got everyone. I hope I did not miss anyone, please.
Teacher-wise?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I do have a couple. We have Brian Mosenko. He is going to, he's coming to us from Field. He is going to be the Spring Hill principal, so we're excited to have him. And he's, he's going to be... to be starting pretty soon, so do you want to say anything?
Thank you. Very excited to be a part of the Springfield community and schools. I look forward to the opportunities. Congratulations to all the retirees that surround me tonight. Neither one did. So yeah, it's been a great process so far, and I wish I could start tomorrow. Quite happy, but very soon I will jump on board and get to work, so thank you.
I'd like to, and I'm pleased to introduce Kevin Nash. He is going to be our new head boys' basketball coach. We're excited about that. He is a graduate of Manchester, where I'm assuming you played basketball there?
Yes.
Okay. I thought it was just a guess. Oh, wait a minute, I'm writing it right here. You played under a longtime coach, Gene Swindell? Okay. And he spent ten years of coaching, so you did J V, I mean, J V and you were assistant.
Down to three boys' basketball for five years, or she says that for five years.
Awesome, and he teaches math, so we're awesome for that, and we're excited for you to take over our basketball. Do you have anything you want to say?
No.
That was it?
That was it.
Thank you, Kevin. And then we did have the retiring of Chris Polling. Chris has been with us for, she became, she was employed in November of nineteen ninety-nine as a part-time secretary for the curriculum department. She became the head building secretary at Shrop for two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and then during the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, she moved to the treasurer's office as the accounts payable clerk, and then in two thousand twenty-four, position was changed to assistant treasurer, so she has been a staple in the treasurer's department, so she will be very much missed. I think that's all that I have.
You don't have more new teachers, I was thinking.
Oh, we do have a lot more new teachers, and, and Mary's gonna, I mean, and she's, she is just, she is like the hiring machine over there. It's all she does is just been, just interviewing and interviewing and interviewing.
It's a good thing.
We're excited, we're excited for everybody that's gonna be here, so I think you're gonna love it here. As you can tell by the people who've stayed here for thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-nine, forever, so it's, it's, it's a place where people want to come and people want to stay, so we are excited. All right, I'm done now.
You can go further.
No, I'm done. For now.
All right, number eleven. It is recommended that the board transfers from the general fund to the following accounts. Bus garage building bond retirement, two thousand three hundred and forty dollars and five, two hundred thirty-four thousand. See, Mr. Nash.
Mr. Nash, we need your numbers. Place value.
The sinking fund bond retirement, nine hundred ninety-five thousand. Cafeteria food service, one hundred and fifty thousand.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Mr. Adams.
I think Mr. Adams has an explanation.
Yeah, two of these were recommended by the auditor to put on because they're yearly, year-end entries. The sinking fund, I know it looks large, but when the high school was built and financed, at that time, President Obama had some innovative Build America Bonds, few SCUBs, so the sinking fund is just basically a, a mortgage that gets paid one time in two thousand twenty-seven. And the bus garage is just the yearly payment for the bus garage. Cafeteria food service transfer, Mr. Boswell will, will go into some of the specifics because it was quite a different year for us and everybody else, I'm sure, so.
Are there any questions before we do?
Do you want Dustin to talk about the lunch now? Go ahead.
So this year in food service, we typically do have to do a transfer into food service because it is its own account, which operates independently, but we have to subsidize that account most years there. This year, we did the Provision Two program, which provided free breakfast and lunch to all of our students. One positive thing with this is we served over fourteen thousand more meals this year than we did last year, so a lot more students were able to take advantage of that and eat healthy meals. We know a lot of our students, that is not always the case at home there, so that was a big positive there. Contributing to this transfer here was higher food costs. We've seen that food and supplies there have definitely hit us, just like they have everybody's home there, and when you're, you know, serving two hundred thousand meals a year, whatever it is there exactly, those, you know, small increments start to add up over, over the year. I think at the high school alone, we had almost fifty thousand additional just in food costs this year, and some of that was the additional meals we served, but a large portion of that was also the, the increase in food cost. We also had to replace an oven this year. We had our administrative review, which adds some, some cost with consulting and getting ready for that review, and as well as the point-of-sale software that we use to manage all of the food service operations. We had been using since two thousand twelve, and the end-of-life, that software, and we had to switch to new software, which was an increased cost there. Sort of along, along with that, we also implemented online menus with full transparencies for carb counts, sugar, and all that, so that, while that was not required, I think was a good thing, but did add to our cost, but gives parents more access to the menus and all the details of what's being eaten on a daily basis. So we're watching the budget very closely because it will contain provisions on whether or not the state will continue to pick up the reduced portion of meals as they have been, which will relate to whether or not we continue with Provision Two next year. One key point with Provision Two, and also contributed to our fund balance this year, was, you know, if you remember back at the beginning of school where we were really pushing that we needed applications from every family to ensure that our free and reduced count was as high as possible this year, didn't come through as we had hoped and expected there, so those numbers were lower than anticipated, which with the difference in reimbursements for a student who's qualified as free versus a student who's qualified as paid, also greatly contributed to the negative fund balance there. So if we are able to continue, if the budget at the state level and our level allows us to continue that Provision Two next year, we're gonna have to do, you know, a greater push to ensure that we get all those applications and, and really get funded where I think we should be funded, because I don't, I don't think we were at that level there based on previous year's numbers. I think we have room for improvement there.
Thank you.
Mrs. Frola.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Furlong.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Excuse me. It is recommended that the board approve the final amended appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, and those were provided in Exhibit six.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Furlong.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mrs. Frola.
Yes. Motion passed. Number thirteen, it is recommended that the board approve the temporary appropriations resolution for fiscal year twenty twenty-six as it appears in Exhibit seven.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Terry. Mr. Furlong.
Yes.
Mrs. Frola.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Number fourteen, fourteen point one, marching band, it is recommended that the board approve an overnight extended trip for the Springfield marching band and chaperones to travel to Camp Muskingham for band camp from July twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five through August second, twenty twenty-five, and all expenses for this over, this trip will be paid through fundraising and by the participants. Fourteen point two, high school cheer, or it is recommended that the board approve an overnight extended trip for the high school cheer team and chaperones to travel to Walsh University to attend cheerleading summer camp from June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five through June twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five, and again, for this trip, all expenses will be paid through fundraising and by participants.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mr. Furlong.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mrs. Frola.
Yes. Motion passed. Trips are on.
Trips are on.
Fifteen, fifteen point one, All Sports Boosters Club, a motion to accept a donation of five thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars from the All Sports Boosters Club to the Springfield baseball team. That the only one?
And second.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Furlong.
Yes.
Mrs. Frola.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, at this point, Mr. Adams, do you have a treasurer?
I just have a, May historically is an in-between time. We got our five-year forecast approved, and obviously, next month is the end of our fiscal year, and the good thing is I highly anticipate that we're gonna be right on target from where we estimated it to be in the year, about September, October. So when a district lands where they think they're gonna land at the end of the year, it makes the treasurer happy. Obviously, with the two renewals passing, and we're looking to get released. I'm talking to the commission actually this week, so there's, they want us to get out as much as we want to get out, so that's exciting news. So next month, I'll have the year-end results and go through exactly where the budget was and what the actions are, so.
Any questions? Thank you. Central Office report?
Good evening. Earlier today, I learned that our transportation supervisor, Melinda Hamilton, was awarded the Everyday Hero Award from the Ohio Association for Pupil Transportation at a conference she's currently attending that came as a surprise to her and us, so that was a wonderful nomination. This is a statewide award that recognizes individuals who go above and beyond in their daily transportation work to ensure the safety and well-being of students, so we'll share a little bit more next month when Melinda will be able to join us. She's still at the conference right now, but when she returns and we can have her at next month's meeting, we'll share a little more about that, but very proud of her and just glad to hear of that accomplishment for her. I returned from Columbus today attending the Ohio School Safety Summit. It's a free conference put on by the Ohio School Safety Center, so it was two days of classes and speakers there focusing on threat assessment, student mental health, building, building security, transportation, and coordination between districts and law enforcement there, so very encouraging couple of days, so I was glad to be able to take that opportunity there and learn a lot that we can start working on.
Thank you.
Mine goes out to the retiring teachers, or retirees, I should say, because it's more than teachers, and to our new hires, to our retirees. Thank you for your years of dedication, passion, and unwavering commitment to the students of Springfield local schools. Your impact has been profound, and your legacy will continue to inspire both students and colleagues alike for years to come. As you embark on this new chapter of your life, may it be filled with joy, relaxation, and a fulfillment of your dreams. Every one of you will be greatly missed. To our new employees, welcome to an incredible journey. You are stepping into a profession that is not only rewarding, but extremely transformative. Embrace the challenges and the joys that lie ahead, and remember that you are, you are part of a supportive community that believes in your potential. We can't wait to see the amazing things that you do with our students. Welcome.
Well, there are still some students attending school. We have thirty-five students that have been attending our E S Y program, either at this building or at next door at Shrop, and the teachers that are teaching that have done a great job making it fun and a little bit more laid back since it is June, and they're the only ones still in school, so they've had a lot of fun, and I've seen them doing some fun hands-on activities the last couple of days, so that's it.
Just a couple of things. Graduation went great, so thank you for everybody. That was, was an exciting time. It's always an exciting time, seeing the kids cross through. We did have a couple of awards for some of our students. This was for the twenty-four, twenty-five Greater Akron Canton High School Sports Award, and it's going to be a live show that's going to be on Tuesday, June seventeenth. So we had students, athletes nominated from our school as athlete of the year, and the students are, I have them here. For bowling, Ryan Slusser. For wrestling, Leanna Swiger. For softball, Brianna Rogirio. And for athlete of the week, Leanna Swiger. So it's, they can go free to this, to this event, and it'll be, so hopefully, we'll keep our fingers crossed that our kids will.
It's a nice event.
It is a nice event, and it's, and it's, and it's, that we have four kids that are making it, so. I think we had a really great end of the year. It's hard to believe that it was just a couple of weeks. When was the last day of school? Last week? Two weeks ago? Two weeks ago? It just seems like summer's just flying by already. I hope everybody out there has a fun, enjoyable, and safe summer, and I just want to say that we're already getting ready for next year, so it's, it's, it's an exciting time. It's an exciting time. Cam, done.
Items worthy of your note. June nineteenth, district buildings will be closed for Juneteenth. June thirtieth, there'll be a special board meeting and work session at six P M. here in the Springfield Administration and Preschool Building. July fifteenth, this the next regular school Board of Education meeting at six P M. here in the Administration Building. At this time, if there are any citizens comments on, it doesn't have to be on agenda items, is there anyone who wishes to?
There you go.
Okay. Anyone? All right. Seeing none.
Thanks, Paula.
Well. Larry, in the years we were, I worked with you, it was a pleasure to get you through, and he's a fellow Steelers fan, so appreciate that. I know.
We were doing so well.
But I moved from Steelers country, so, okay. If I see none, no one wants, then at this time, it's recommended that the board go into executive session to prepare for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees, and there's no anticipation of business upon return, so.
You can leave.
I was trying to think, could I say that?
Yeah, you can say that. Bye-bye.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Okay. All right, it's moved in second, Mr. Adams.
Mr. Furlong.
Yes.
Mr. Terry. Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mrs. Frola.
Motion passed, and thank you again to everyone.